It is. As I get older, it's a pleasure. My brother was kind of the same, like the same as you. And then the Florida humidity brought that too, my Florida trip. Great. So, yeah, I mean, it's like refer them to someone. I even had my clients like sit down. Yeah, they work with us, you know, they help support, so.
How nice.
So the bigger products. I just came to make sure it's good. It happened once where they tried to cure it. So I have referred other than this. I have one more. Couple of D I Rs. I've had my prior. No, it's been two years. Thank you. Oh, it's still hurts all kinds of way. It'll never, it'll never go down. I've broken it three times since I was sixteen, so. My pal, like, Valentina, did her career with Oprah and Oprah.
I'm sorry. You know, actually, I love this guy.
Yes.
I will go back. I like him, though.
Okay, for sure, for sure. Yep, we were brainstorming today, so we thought we would submit our response to comments by Thursday.
We'll be slightly delayed here, we're just waiting for one of the employees to come back, so when they get back, we'll get started. Okay. I want the exact time, so I can act like the mayor now. Okay. Good evening, sorry for the delay, it's six oh eight P M. Welcome to the City of Paris Planning Commission meeting, August sixth, two thousand twenty-five. It was a hundred and three today, so you should be glad to be in air conditioning this evening, right? We can always turn the heat up, I tell people, I don't think so. But thank you for being here in our council chambers, and we're ready to go, so we'll start with our roll call of commissioners.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Here.
Commissioner Menes.
Here.
Vice Chair Shively.
Here.
Chair Hammond.
Here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Lopez.
Please stand for the pledge.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item four is presentations, and I believe we have any. We move to item five, consent calendar. A and B, approval of planning commission minutes, July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And street naming review twenty-five dash zero 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 one. A proposal to name six nine streets with intended attract number thirty-seven nine oh four, located in northeast corner of Mountain Avenue and McPherson Road in the R six thousand P D O. Single-family residential planned development overlay. And requested action is approved, street naming review twenty-five dash zero 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 one. I have a question for the attorney, for my sake, do we, can I just pull one item since I have to recuse, or should we just do?
Yeah, you can, you can pull that item from the consent calendar, and then there can be a vote on the consent, and then you can go to that item.
Okay, so at least on item A, and then I can pull off on item B, okay. Start with A. Any changes, deletions, additions to item A, the minutes?
Do we, do we need a vote to pull that off?
No, any individual commissioner can, so we can say that Chair Hammond has pulled item five B off consent, so now there's a, can entertain a motion on the consent calendar with subtraction of item five B.
Well, five A, is there any public comment on that item on the minutes? Item five A? Didn't think so. Closing the public comment, we move on to a vote on item I A. Five A. Losing it. Five A, approval of planning commission minutes, July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
I make a motion.
Okay. And moved by Commissioner Jimenez.
I'll second it.
Go ahead. Lopez will second.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez is second.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Yes.
Commissioner Menes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shively.
Yes.
Chair Hammond.
Yes. Did it take? Should be five, right?
No, it didn't.
It didn't take yours, but you say yes, so it's five to zero, this motion is approved.
Hmm, okay. Item four B, I'll just read it, and then I'm gonna step. Five B. Yeah, five B, yeah. That's it for? I need some more water or something, it's not getting, coffee, coffee. Street name, street name, street naming, street naming review, street naming, street name review, twenty-five dash zero 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 one, a proposal to name nine streets with intended attract map number thirty-seven nine zero four. Located in the northeast corner of Mountain Avenue and McPherson Road in the R six thousand R P D O. Single-family residential planned development overlay zone, it's an ex parte communication, any side visits. And I will recuse myself on this particular item due to previous litigation with the. For to the vice chair.
Drink some coffee.
At this time, we're, go ahead and open the public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, sorry, it's not a public hearing item.
Okay. We're open for discussion for planning commissions, if we still need to, is there any deletions, revisions, or that we want to change the street names?
For Street A, I would prefer Shadestone over Sales Design. Shadestone Lane, option number two. That was my only one.
Any others? Okay. No others, if we can just revise Street A to Shadestone Lane. And if we can have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Ready for the vote?
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Yes.
Commissioner Menes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shively.
Yes.
Chair Hammond recused himself. With a vote of four to zero, this motion is approved. Thank you.
We'll go call Commissioner Hammond back.
That was good.
Gee, I didn't get any ice cream, come on.
Oh, you didn't even have time for ice cream.
Okay. Thanks a lot, guys. Okay. Oh, that was quick. We move on to item six, public hearings. Item six A is tentative parcel map twenty-five dash zero 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 seven. And development plan review twenty-two dash zero 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 two two, twenty-three dash zero 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 nine, and twenty-three dash zero 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 one zero. A proposal to consider the following entitlements for the development of Nance Street, trailer, storage, and maintenance yards on three separate sites totaling nine point seven two acres. Located along Nance Street between Nevada and Webster Avenues within the general industrial zone of the Perez Valley Commerce Center specific plan. And one tentative parcel map, three eight five two eight, to consolidate eight parcels into one parcel for Site One, totaling five point six one acres. And number two, development plan reviews for the site plan and building elevations of Sites One and Two. Each proposed to be developed with an eleven thousand seven hundred square foot mechanical service and maintenance building with outdoor trailer storage. And for Site Three, which is proposed to be developed as a trailer storage facility. Applicant, Lake Creedin Creek Industrial LLC. And our contract planner is Matthew Evans. Requested action, its continuance request for item six A, tentative parcel map twenty-five dash zero 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 seven. Development plan review twenty-two dash zero 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 two two, twenty-three dash zero 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 nine, and twenty-three zero 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 one zero. And this continuation would be to August twentieth, Wednesday, two thousand twenty-five. For purposes of confirming details and condition of approval with staff, they're asking for this continuance up until August twentieth. So do we have, or we probably still should have, public comment? Okay, we have public comment, do we have public comment on this item? Okay. Ah. Yes. And this item only, you state your full name and spell your last name for us, we appreciate it.
My first, my full name is Kurt Heinz, last name H E I N Z E. March Air Reserve Base, base civil engineer, normal language, that's the director of Public Works. So I have comments that I would like to be able to review the plans to ensure that they are in compliance with Air Force regulations. This site is located in accident potentials number one, so we would need time to review that, sir.
Hey, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we close the public common portion and bring it back to us as a continuance, we have a motion.
I'll motion for continuance.
I'll second.
You got that moved by Vice Chair Shively and seconded by Commissioner Jimenez?
Mr. Chair, could we please have a specification of the date, time, and location to which the continuance would be?
Yeah, okay. The continuance would be to August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
At the regular meeting time and place, thank you.
No, we're gonna do it twelve A M on, no, I'm just kidding, just kidding. Hey. No, it's a regular time.
I'll be awake.
I have to be a troublemaker, you know that, come on.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Yes.
Commissioner Menes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shively.
Yes.
Chair Hammond.
Yes, I did vote this time.
With a vote of five to zero, this motion is approved.
Thank you very much. We move on to item six B. Item six B, conditional use permit, twenty-three dash zero five two six four, and development plan review twenty-four dash zero 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 one four. Development plan review twenty-four dash zero 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 one four, and conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero five two six four. Proposal to consider construction of Ayarta Marketplace, I put it right, Marketplace Shopping Center on ten point five five acres. Located on the southeast corner of Placencia Avenue and Paris Boulevard in the commercial community zone. Necessitating the following, number one, conditional use permit to emit a four thousand nine hundred and thirteen square foot convenience store and vehicle fueling station. A two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven square foot drive-through coffee shop, and two drive-through restaurants totaling four thousand seven hundred square feet. And two development plan review for the site plan and building elevations of the fifty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-one square foot grocery store supermarket Ayarta. A seven thousand five hundred and ten square foot inline retail building, a fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-three square foot junior anchor building. And a standalone seven thousand square foot retail building. Applicant, Ayarta Supermarkets, markets. Requested action, adopt resolution twenty-five dash seventeen, certifying the final environmental impact report. And adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program statement of overriding considerations for noise and greenhouse gas emissions and findings of fact. And adopt resolution twenty-five dash eighteen, approving development plan review twenty-four dash zero 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 one four. And conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero five two six four for the construction of Ayarta Marketplace Shopping Center on ten point five five acres. Based on the findings contained in the resolution and subject to conditions of approval, we have any ex parte communication ad hoc committee meetings, side visits, or et cetera.
I drive by the site frequently.
Also drive by the site very frequently.
Yeah, I've also driven by the site.
Also drive by the site very frequently.
Same here. All yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair, for that introduction, good evening members of the planning commission, city staff, and members of the public, as mentioned.
Before you start, and I should do this, you would probably do it, but I'm gonna do it.
No problem.
We were handed this today, August sixth, two thousand twenty-five, item six B, updated conditions of approval from planning, engineering, public, I knew you would do it, I'm just gonna do it. Public Works and Community Services Department attached with consideration or updated conditions of approval from planning, engineering, public works, and community services departments. As summarized below, it's very lengthy, so I'm certainly not gonna do it, it's obviously available to the public. And there are cross outs on several different pages, particularly page four in the back, and other places as you look through it. So they've been crossed out, I could probably go over some of the changes that maybe even the engineer may have to go through, I'm not sure. But yeah, whatever these changes are, we could probably discuss those, rather than us take out a whole time just to read this at this point. All yours.
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this evening, we have before you the Ayarta Marketplace Shopping Center. Project site is located at the southeast corner of Placencia Avenue and Paris Boulevard. As far as the surrounding uses, we have single-family residences to the north across the street from Placencia Avenue. We have commercial and industrial businesses across the street from Paris Boulevard, just to the west. To the east and to the south, we have existing single-family residences. With respect to the general plan and the zoning map, it is consistent with both being community commercial. Within the community commercial zone, it does allow uses as a matter of right. It allows for the drive-through businesses and vehicle fueling stations, subject to the granting of the conditional use permit. Here we have a street view looking south at the project site from Placencia Avenue. This is an image looking east from Paris Boulevard. And here is a corner image, Google Earth image, view looking southeast at the project site. Here we have before you is the site plan. The site consists of ten point fifty-five acres with the Ayarta supermarket, we have the junior anchor building, the convenience store and fueling station and its canopy. Drive-through coffee shop, two drive-through restaurants, retail building one and a retail building two. In addition, it has ninety-four capable E V stations spread throughout the site. And as part of those ninety-four stations, twenty-four of them will be E V charging station ready. With respect to access and circulation, there will be six driveways to access the site, three along Paris Boulevard and three along Placencia Avenue with right-in and right-out access. The middle and the eastern driveways along Placencia Avenue will have a left-in option. Here we have before you some site renderings, Ms. Arvitz, if you could be so kind enough as to pass out the material board, thank you very much. As you can see, the project has a modern take on Spanish architecture design. Some of the design enhancements involve a variety of roof types, clay tile roofs, arches, smooth white stucco, the Spanish tiles, and decorative lighting. Here we have some additional site and site plan enhancements, such as the pedestrian paths of travel, decorative shopping cart stations, stamped concrete, and decorative trash enclosures. Here we have some two D elevations of the Ayarta and the Junior Market tenants. As well as further building elevations of the other buildings located on the site. Again, the architecture is consistent throughout the entire site. Here we have you is the conceptual landscape plan, the minimum requirement is ten percent, the applicant is providing eleven percent or fifty-one thousand square feet of landscaping. With respect to code compliance and the development standards, they are all met and exceeded. With respect to SEQA, an environmental impact report was prepared in compliance with the SEQA guidelines. The E I R concluded that all impacts were reduced to less than significant or have been reduced to below significant a level with the implementation of mitigation measures. During the forty-five day review, public review period, staff received four comments from the following agencies that you see before you. And none of the comments raised any additional environmental issues that weren't already addressed in the environmental impact report. With that said, this evening's staff recommendation is for the planning commission to adopt P C resolution twenty-five seventeen, certifying the environmental impact report. And adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, statement of overriding considerations for noise and greenhouse gas, and the findings of fact. And adopt P C resolution twenty-five eighteen, approving C U P twenty-three fifty-two sixty-four, D P R twenty-four zero 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 fourteen. For the construction of the Ayarta Place Shopping Center on ten point five acres, based on the findings contained in the resolution and subject to the conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. Also, just for the record, I believe Mr. Benjamin Jones had just one more amendment that he had to share with the commission as far as the findings in the resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Garcia. We had one word that we wanted to correct in the resolution. Just trying to find it. Hold on one second. So it's the second, it's the third-to-last recital on the second page, which says, "All of the proposed findings and conclusions recommended by this resolution are based upon the administrative record." The word "recommended" should be changed to the word "made." And that's it.
You know where, I missed it, which number was that for the resolution? That's not the condition of approval of the resolution.
Third-to-last recital on page two of the resolution. It should be changed from "all of the proposed findings and conclusions recommended by this resolution," and that should be changed to "all of the proposed findings and conclusions made in this resolution." And that would be deemed a part of staff's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the applicant here this evening, Mr. Wade, to further provide any clarification the commission may have. Thank you.
If the applicant would like to give a presentation, welcome to come forward. Just state your full name and spell your last name for us.
My name is Wade Shuey, S-H-U-E-Y. Higher? Yeah. My name is Wade Shuey, last name's S-H-U-E-Y. Thank you, distinguished commissioners, for taking a look at our project today. We're really excited to be a part of the Paris community here. In behalf of the Ayarta family, they are really excited to open up this new location. Looking forward to be a part of the community for years to come. Just a couple of quick notes that we've already submitted working drawings into the city at risk. We are very eager to get this started and invest in your community. And I'll be sitting here for any comments or questions. Feel free to ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. You might want to stay up front because we usually have questions. At this time, if you have any questions for the applicant and/or city, now would be the time.
Thank you Alfredo for the presentation. I have a quick question in regards to the trash enclosures, specifically the one on, for the convenience store, for the gas station convenience store.
Yes.
I was just worried of how far it is from the actual store and it crosses the path of travel for the driveway. Is there, was there any talks of having it closer to the convenience store or maybe like along the corner of that landscaped area?
That's definitely a very good point. Staff is willing to work with the applicant as far as maybe finding a safer, closer location of that trash enclosure to the convenience store.
Yeah, I was just worried because I know the cars are going to be coming in and out of that driveway, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, we tried strategically placing, and the applicant did too, with his development team as far as placing them close, but yeah, that distance does seem a little far, so.
Okay, thank you so much. Another question in regards to the fencing on the south and east side of the property. I know you guys are going to have a six-foot wall. There's currently a wall sitting there right now. Is that going to be replaced?
Yes, the perimeter wall will be replaced with a new wall.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Alright, perfect.
So the fencing to the east and to the south will be replaced.
Awesome. And then, was there any concerns brought up to the residents that are surrounding the project?
300-foot notices were distributed to the residences. We did not receive any written comments or visits or emails from anyone.
So no concerns?
No, yeah, as of present day, yeah.
Awesome, alright, thank you. And then I know, I saw that you guys have EV charging stations. Are those EV-ready?
So the ones that will be EV-ready will be, 24 of them will be EV-ready, and 94 of them will be capable.
Okay.
Ready in the future, 24 will be ready.
On-site, ready to go?
On-site, correct, yes.
Okay, perfect. No further questions.
You're welcome, sir.
I just have one quick question.
Yes ma'am.
Is it, are palm trees generally a part of the Ayarta's general landscaping scheme across like all of the locations? Like is that something that is maybe like known? Like I know like how like In-N-Out has their palm trees. Is that something that's part of the brand on Ayarta, or is it?
As far as the brand and their overall, you know, statement, I'll let Mr. Wade kind of weigh in on that part. I know we try to implement the palm tree as far as a Spanish look, if you will, but I'll let Mr. Wade expand on what the palette was for the palm tree.
Thank you.
They've always expressed Southern California style with their designs. So yes, palm trees are generally where they go with some of their trees. Not a lot of cities will allow it to be as prevalent, but definitely something that they do allow and they do want, so. We did incorporate them and they're a very nice feature, especially when they become very tall and big and really accent the building, so. Yeah, that was definitely a preference for them.
Okay. Thank you. I did have one, I guess it's not quite a question, so I'll save it for later. I think that's it for me for questions for now.
Okay, I did want to expand on Commissioner Lopez's questions about the fencing. Would you go into detail about the mitigation measures we're taking to protect, because there are neighbors right next to it. How close those buildings are, the loading docks are back there. So are we taking any mitigation measures? How tall is the fencing dividing them from the houses?
Yeah, as far as the noise study, the block wall will be eight feet high. You have the.
Six.
Sorry, six.
Because eight feet is a whole big difference, and six feet is a big difference. So I'm talking about particularly the loading dock area, I guess that's the question.
Six.
Six feet?
Six feet, sorry.
Unless we do say otherwise.
Six.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Six.
I just wanted to get clear because I wasn't sure what was.
So the neighbors could look over. Some of those houses are two-story, right, if I'm not mistaken?
Some are. So you have a 15-foot setback from the home to the property line. You have the proposed block wall. You'll have a five-foot landscape buffer with trees. So from the east side, you'll have a 58-foot distance.
How much?
58.
Okay.
From north to south, you'll have the home, 15 feet, the block wall, five-foot landscape buffer with trees, and 32 feet of distance.
Did we do a vision study for people entering their backyard?
Just the cross-sections that you see before you. We did do the enhancements on the elevations that the neighbors would be looking at from their rear yard, so we did enhance those elevations. So it wouldn't just be a blank wall or anything like that. All lighting and decorative lighting will be shining downwards, so there will be no spillage of lighting to the neighbors as well, so.
I guess my question is, will they be able to see the big rigs? Because I understand there's landscaping, but if one of those neighbors are in their backyard and they look over, will they see the top of the big rigs that are stationed there for unloading? That is my main concern.
So we're going to have landscaping along the easterly side and the southerly side in conjunction with the wall. Also, something to remember, this is not a warehouse where you're going to have semi-trucks coming and going as you would in that type of use. This is more of a, you know, it's a commercial use where you're going to have delivery trucks coming either early in the morning or at night, but it's not going to be this frequent coming and going like you would expect in a warehouse, so if you can keep that in consideration.
I appreciate that, but they do leave them there usually. Just about every grocery store has one dock usually. So they're parked there. I guess that was my concern, and you did bring up a good point too, that was my next question, the noise, because if they're coming early morning, although the documents say deliveries are during business hours.
Yeah, so maybe the applicant can explain that. But the noise study was done for this project, and the noise study recommended six-foot-high block wall. And we rely on the technical reports to, in order for us to indicate whether or not higher walls would be needed.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. There's also a mitigation measure that's included in the documents, actually in the initial study, but it limits the deliveries to daytime hours from 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM. That's because if deliveries were to occur during the nighttime hours, the noise levels from that activity would exceed the city's noise ordinance standard, which is different than the daytime standard. So delivery, there were less-than-significant impacts with daytime deliveries. It's one loading dock, it's not, you know, multiple. But so yes, the study was done and it was based on a six-foot solid masonry wall, but because of the quiet, you know, ambient conditions at night and the height of the wall, no deliveries could occur at nighttime without a significant impact.
Okay.
So.
And it's 10 o'clock, the average for cities to have nighttime ordinance? When does nighttime ordinance kick in?
Typically 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Yes. Typically, from a noise standpoint, daytime is from 7:00 AM till about 6:00 PM. Evening is 6:00 to 10:00 or so, or 7:00 to 10:00, just depending. But for Paris, it's 10:00 PM.
Okay, we don't have that evening time, I don't remember.
I think we have 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on this one, I think, right?
No, 10:00 PM.
On this, on this particular one?
Yeah.
That's correct.
You better show me.
And that's based on the city's noise ordinance.
Is it 10:00 PM? I mean, written in here, I agree with, but I mean, is it 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM, okay. That's a lot different deliveries at 10:00 PM than stopping at 7:00, because that doesn't make any sense at 7:00. Okay, just getting it straight, just getting it straight.
All the trash enclosures are covered and screened. And the rooftop is tiled roof?
Yes, it will have a solid roof to meet WQMP standards.
And for the Ayarta store, where is the trash enclosure? And is it ADA accessible, or is it on the interior?
It will be just behind where the shop reti, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Let's go to the next one. There we go. So can we see what I can do?
Yeah, no, but not ADA accessible for.
Oh, yeah.
If it is that one to the right, it's, you don't have the ADA accessible striping for it. Is that one intended to be for Ayarta or not?
Ayarta has two programs. One is for general trash, but they don't use it all that often. The other one, they have a compactor service that comes in. It takes most of their garbage.
It's mostly interior, then?
Yes. As far as that one is concerned, they should have striped it over. It is intended for the use of Ayarta, so. Yeah, I apologize, they should have been striped over. And we'll work with staff to make sure it's taken care of.
Should be an easy one, as long as it's ADA compliant with the slope, so.
And the trash enclosure for the junior anchor, would you review how far away that is from the houses? Because there's one right against that corner. Yes, that one.
Yeah, so it'd be five feet.
From?
The block wall.
Five feet from the block wall? And then we had that buffer, right? Or is that one right against?
Correct, so it would be the trash enclosure, five-foot landscape buffer, block wall, 15-foot setback, house.
The applicant opposed to give it a slightly larger buffer?
So moving it somewhere else, so it's not so close to the houses.
We'll work with staff to find another location or move it over. I think there's areas that we can move it down, not impede the impact of the trucks. There is some dead area there, we can pull it forward. But yeah, we'll work with staff to make that happen.
Okay, yeah, that's really close to the houses, thank you. Another question for the applicant. Do you have the drive-through restaurants that are interested in this location already, or is it just big?
Right now, they're out to lease. We do have some that have made major interest here. Actually, that was the fastest one, they were trying to lease. Nobody will sign the leases until we are approved and underway with the construction, but there are some LOIs out there already, and they're very, very popular brands, and I think everyone will like them, but I'm not allowed to say what they are right now, but I promise you, you will not be disappointed.
Okay, that's great, because my next question was, were you open, if there wasn't an interest, to sit-down restaurants, which I know our residents ask for?
If a sit-down restaurant came in, I'm sure they would be open to having that discussion.
Okay.
And maybe doing a standard performance for something like that, but.
If there was interest.
If there's an interest, and you know how the world goes around, goes with dollars, so. If there's an LOI that's interest, that makes sense to the applicant, I'm sure they'll sit down.
And in comparison to the other Ayarta shows, or shows? Look, I'm aging myself, the Ayarta, should remember that band? To the Ayarta stores? How does this one compare to the others that are built? Is it smaller, bigger, is it within the average?
So the average Ayarta store runs about 49,000 to 55,000 square feet, and we're topping almost 60. So this is going to be one of the bigger, larger stores. A few reasons for that is, it's very far from their hub, so they need to be able to store a little more. Secondly, is they really want to impact in an empire. This is, if you noticed, Colton opened up a few weeks ago.
Yes.
Ranch Cook Among Us is coming.
Yes.
Hooper Valley is on the works, they're moving this way. So you guys will be in the front line of this new grocery boom that is going on. I'm sure they're going to take off with more locations, which we've been talking about some of the things there. So yes, this is going to be a very nice store. You guys should all visit up in Colton, it's the closest one here. It's very beautiful, they did a great job with it, and we were lucky to be a part of it, and that's why we're lucky to be a part of this.
Thank you. I think that was it for me.
Does Ayarta have e-commerce in deliveries, or?
It does have e-commerce. There is a section for e-commerce when we do the final plans, it'll have an e-commerce area. We're lucky enough to be the ones to do the tenant improvements as well, so we do all their interiors as well, so.
Okay. Thank you guys, you brought up some issues. I made quite a few notes on this one. Not necessarily bad, but first, and they've kind of covered it, the fact there are no tenants. We always talk about spec buildings and industrial. What is it, spec buildings for commercial? And that's sometimes a concern when you don't have them. Now, you don't have to mention it if we do have them, but obviously, to not have them, we're taking chance. Secondly, I'm going to run through the things on me while. Second.
Just to speak on that real quick. They are actively searching for every tenant right now. And they do have LOIs at the four and the five buildings. So it is being looked at very heavily.
Yeah. Well, some of this discussion, some of these questions, so I'm going to leave some things for the future, but I think we need to clarify if we, and that's the decision up here too. If it's written down as six feet, then it's at our discretion if we want to do anything with that, so. Should this be moved on, but that's a discussion matter. One thing too to note, that on Paris Boulevard, there has to be a de-acceleration lane that's going to have to be put in, which will impact that street to some way, which you have to in order to turn in there right. So there's two openings, actually three, right, on Paris Boulevard, which makes a big difference. One is not just emergency at the south, but that's for anyone to come in, so we don't really have that issue, it's not industrial. The other northern portion, obviously, you're coming in that way, and we're not really concerned, it's not going to be any Midtown carway, not happening. So just that one on the, actually two. Two on Placencia, three. And one is just mainly for trucks and for delivery. I guess the concern primarily is the wall with the residences. I know we have a setback, but I'm one of these high-wall people. I'm really hard to get off eight feet. And I don't care what residents, I'm talking about noise for them, it's also aesthetics, you know. And, you know, if we move forward with that, that would be. And, you know, if we move forward with that, that would be a concern of mine, that's not a major, it could cost a few more dollars. But we're thinking about residences and we're not saying about the project, I'm just talking about that distance there. Whether it's to sit-down restaurants, which we desperately need, or whether it's the other, that's up to the market, market-driven, so we're not going to get into that at this point. I think, but the de-acceleration lane is one of those keys, because that's going to be a traffic flow issue. And we have left-in, right-out, all that on Placentia, but it's not that, there's no median there at that point, which makes it, please, don't move on. Because that would kill, yeah, that would kill it, and you'd have to have a median to turn, and it's not necessary in Placentia. But whatever changes come to Paris Boulevard is pretty much, you would have to mandatory. Uplighting was mentioned, and uplifting is very important, I think that is awesome, yeah. Because you know we're going to bring it up if you didn't, right? And I think the statement of overriding conditions, and this may be Mr. Brown's question, but it was not necessarily noise, but it was quote greenhouse emissions. And maybe you want to explain, that was the one that you already answered in terms of the initial study. And that was made, that was one of the challenges, I think, was the greenhouse emission. So you want to go briefly talk about that, because if we need a statement of overriding condition, that means it did not meet the standard, quote-unquote. So, you know, we're doing a statement, we don't normally do that. But unless there's a cumulative effect, like you have on those industrials, and you have cumulative projects, and you just can't do anything. But if there's an economic benefit, things like that, you're better at it than I would be.
So this project has two significant unavoidable impacts. One is with regards to operational air quality impacts, the other is with regards to greenhouse gas emissions. And it's basically with, under both situations, this project generates enough traffic and has enough onsite activity through energy sources and things, that it's going to exceed the thresholds of significance that are utilized by the city here. With regards to air quality, those are the thresholds of significance established by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And for greenhouse gas, it's also a draft threshold that was developed by the South Coast AQMD. Unfortunately, the threshold of significance, especially for greenhouse gas, is very low. And means a number of projects are going to have significant impacts. Now, one thing that we do on these projects is we look at them sort of as a new use, if you will. Let's just assume that all vehicle trips to and from the site are new, other than those that are passing by. And so the emissions are calculated as such, and then compared to the thresholds. In the real world, it may actually be less, because this, for example, this use here is a grocery store in an area of the city that does not have a grocery store. So people in this area have to drive to grocery stores elsewhere within the city, or in other jurisdictions and things. Now, if there's a grocery store close by, those vehicle trips are actually now reduced, you know, trip-wise. Emissions that everybody shops for groceries, you've just reduced emissions, we do not look at that. So it would be too difficult to go through and do all that. So, the issue here is, commercial uses generate a lot of traffic. And as such, we have two sources of emissions that are over thresholds that are used by the city.
And just to clarify too, if you have any shopping center, there's no way to avoid it, because you can't really, the number of trips, it could be nighttime, it could be evening, it could be, I mean, I don't know how you mitigate that, unless you had train transit, which you don't have. So that's, I only question that because you have a statement of overriding consideration, but that would be standard on most anything built, if it's going to be commercial like this, so I don't know how you avoid that. They're looking at vehicle miles, driven VMTs, is that what they're looking at? Or that's a standard for, or the square footage of the property, or the number? And based on that, you assume, based on the transportation models, that you're going to have this many trips?
Correct.
So.
And it's based on the existing vehicle fleet mix. If in the future, there are more electric vehicles, for example, on the road. You know, as you even questioned earlier, how many, Commissioner Lopez asked, you know, about the EV spots. You know, there's a minimum number that are required now, but based on demand in the future, there are the spaces that are already going to be wired for additional ones. So in the future, if there are enough electric vehicles, then emissions go down. So it's based on all these assumptions, based on an existing fleet mix, and assuming that all the vehicles traveling to and from this project are new trips.
And lastly for me, with the threshold for noise, is it 65? Because we're talking about 83, but that would only be construction generally, right? So if you're talking about 65, that's, that would be?
The noise ordinance?
60, 60, right, 60 or 63?
The noise ordinance standard for sources such as amplified equipment, delivery, things which we use for loading docks and things like that. It's 80 decibels maximum during the day and 60 decibels at night.
60 at night, yeah, okay. Good luck with that one. Yeah, that's a lot, but generally, you would find that in construction. You know, basically, you can't avoid that with construction, and then try to keep the idling and all the other stuff. And then, but with construction, that's kind of normal, isn't it, to have 80? But if that's normal at a shopping center?
So there's, there is, the noise ordinance does have a standard for construction at nearby residential properties, and that is 80 decibels. And that would be basically during the day. The mitigation in this document here for that is to construct an eight-foot temporary barrier along the eastern and southern perimeters of the project site. Those will be up for the duration of construction until the new masonry walls are, or, you know, concrete walls are put up.
No 12:00 a.m. construction, I was looking forward to that, yeah.
Hope not.
Come on. Okay, okay, I'm done unless you guys have anything.
Is there another palm tree that we perhaps look at, either replacing the palm tree or choosing a palm tree that's not, that's not 50 to 80 feet tall?
We work with staff on a smaller palm tree. We like to reserve the right for the taller ones at the, at Paris though, so we have that nice entrance look.
These particular palm trees apparently 50 to 80, 80 feet tall, which?
Correct, they get pretty tall.
It's the dates too, that becomes a maintenance issue.
But we can work with staff to find one that can reduce in height. Just want to speak real quick about the wall. We don't mind going eight feet. I think it's good, it's a neighborly way to be, they're a good operator. Couple courses of blocks, you don't see truck traffic and ease in the noise, and it seems like that's, that's the spirit, the whole commission's all about, is make sure it's right for the public. So if it's right for the public, we'll make it happen.
I did have a quick question. Do we have any, or are there any plans to use solar for any of these, to help offset that energy demand that I know?
There is. We have to follow the new guidelines, which is going to put solar in every building. Also, the grocery store is going to have battery backups, battery storage backups. And also, we have to have EV for the trucking, that's something kind of new for California, but we have to make and comply with it. If you look right off on Placentia Boulevard, there's a row of EVs there that were kind of designed a certain way, so that way, if a Tesla station wanted to go in there, or if we wanted to expand on it, it could be very easily done. Which is really in the spirit of how to offset the fuel canopy, right? That's a good way to be. So, we worked with the ownership, we talked to them, that's actually a leasing point, LOI, that we're looking for, to get out there with, to have an operator come in and lease those areas. So, just to let you know, we are trying to be very cautious.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to ask, can we go back to the access points and movement of right-in, right-out? Who has access to left-in? That one. So on the, what is it, northernly side on Placentia, the one that's, the one closest to Paris Boulevard? Is there anything there that's preventing a left-in? Other than, and don't say signage.
What if I added striping on top of it?
Oh, yeah, lighting, now you're fancy.
No, I was saying striping and signage, so that would be, because there's no curb median out there, they would only be striping and signage to prevent any left-ins and left-outs at that location.
And with the traffic study, you feel like that would be a, and my concern is people are going to stop to make that left turn, and the person behind them is not expecting them to stop in the middle of the road to make a left-in, that's my concern.
Well, with the two left-ins just east, I think it gives, you know, drivers, motorists, the opportunity to make that left turn prior to that far west driveway there. So I mean, if someone disobeys the rules of the road, that's something that happens, you know, you see it every day. But for that left-end movement, that driveway, those two driveways that allow for that left-in, it gives adequate time for motorists to utilize.
In my head, I'm thinking if I can make a left on the first one, we'll make a left on the last one, closer to where I want to go.
Yeah, if you're going to the gas station, potentially, I mean, but again, it's.
That is my thinking, if I can make left and left, the next one means left.
That comes down to the rules of the road. If people are willing to, you know, go across that double yellow line and risking a ticket, that's really on user error at that point.
Is there even like a center pocket or anything that would be like a slowdown?
There's a two-way left turn median there, all striped. But again, on Placentia Avenue there, it's all striped, and that's kind of consistent all the way going east.
Okay, because Paris has a median.
Yeah.
Paris Boulevard has a median all the way up to Placentia.
Paris is just, or Placentia's just a striping.
That gives that physical barrier for a right-in, right-out for all those driveways.
Would a T or pork chop work in that southern entrance?
So I mean, it's something to consider, but it doesn't really prevent users from, especially passenger vehicles, from making that turn in if they want to make that happen. It really comes down to the user at that point. And from a maintenance point of view too, those pork chops, a lot of people clip them, and it ends up looking worse over the years. So, in my opinion, I don't think they're the greatest for passenger vehicles. If it's a truck access point only, then it's more, it could be considered, because it restricts those left turns for the trucks. But for passenger vehicles, it's easy to maneuver around it.
Is it possible to even add, you know, they have on the freeway, not cones, but those sticks?
Yeah, again, from just a maintenance point of view, it looks nice the first few months, but you get one person running them over, and it looks a little trashy after a while, but it's something we could consider.
I think even if, I don't know if it would be possible to keep them up for a time being, so people get used to the traffic, but then it would leave the base and it would still have. I just want something when it's first built, kind of established, like, because you get used to patterns.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we could consider, but again, it's, we see it throughout town, those delineators, especially when they're in the path of travel like that, they're going to get hit within the first month.
Yeah.
Yeah, two days, and maintenance, it just, you have the glue down, and you have the things permanently glued down, but without the stick, and it just, it looks ugly at that point, so that's kind of why we prefer to avoid that.
Is there anything that you have found in your traffic studies that would serve more of a purpose for really ensuring that people understand that last one is not a left-in? In your experience, have you seen anything that works in any other city, other place that just really?
Honestly, not really, besides striping and signage. It really comes down to user error at that point. If someone's willing to take that risk, you can only do so much, unfortunately. I mean, we see it on the road every day.
Oh, and my second question was, most of our shopping centers that are on corners like this have a monument-type sign or some kind of signage for attention, were they considering anything for this?
Yeah, I did see in one, and if you look through that packet, there was a sign, but they're not asking for signage now. But in the actual thing that was given to us, there was a sign. I mean, I'm not talking about a monument sign, it was like some of the other ones. So is that part of this, because it really wasn't stated, there was nothing, or that's something that comes later? Like the Cardenas, you'll have all these different, you're going to have to have that eventually, it's just it's not on this one.
You are correct, the sign is not part of this, the approval that you're, or the project that you're considering tonight. Signs are usually processed administratively, so they're, they require a separate application to be submitted to the planning division for administrative review.
Okay, but not through us for that one?
In addition, Public Works conditioned the project site to have a corner low monument sign that says welcome to Paris or city of Paris. You can actually see the detail in the Public Works conditions of approval, there's an exhibit at the end of it.
Well, similar, I think she's talking about like to the spectrum, you'll have four different things in there, they're tall, maybe 10 feet high, or whatever, and this is what's in there, this is what's in there, this is what's in there. So, and it is showing on one of these pictures, trust me, I looked at it. And, you know, and it's showing there, and I'm saying, but it's not part of this one, but that would be something that come, if they choose to do that. And if we choose to do this, it would be something later. So the sign was not mentioned there, that's all she's saying, it's not mentioned there, but it is showing.
Or like what type of signage you want for the future, or?
Yeah, so that would be, that's an administrative, you're saying, okay. You know how we are, so.
Yeah, you do. They're used to us.
It's okay. We're here to, to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, and I also would like to consider something else on palm trees, but it sounds like there's conversation, yeah, okay.
We will put that in, though. Quick question, engineering, you didn't think I was going to bother you today, did you? Then two questions, number one, the distance, she's talking about on Placentia, the one that's right-in, right-out. What is the distance between that, and this will answer that question, from that and the Paris Boulevard? In other words, is it 150 feet, because that makes a big difference, is what they have right-in? And then up at the northern part, which is where the trucks will come in and do the deliveries, what is the width of that driveway? Because is that 26 feet, we're going to meet the minimum fire department? But the distance in the northern driveway, but also the distance between the Placentia, the southernmost, to the street, makes a big difference of whether you have turn-in, because that is a gas station there, so you know there's going to be a lot of traffic within that. So do you know that distance, or the typical distance at the top, especially the top? Is it 26 feet?
The one at the top left here, so the northeast corner, I believe that's a 24-feet-wide driveway? 30s, okay, so, I mean, it meets the minimum 24 feet that we're looking for. And then to answer your question for the driveway along Placentia, the westernmost, it's about 200 feet away from Paris Boulevard, so for right-in, right-out, that's typically adequate. As far as, and I wanted to come back to that left turn to, you know, to try to deter left turns in, we could add some type of Chevron striping in the middle median there to kind of give that visual that, hey, this is a median, you can't turn here, so it's more than just the double yellow line. I'm sure you've seen it in places where, you know, it just adds that real median look to it, yes, exactly.
Yeah, because my next question was, can we remove it, is it necessary there? Because when you turn in, there isn't, like all the other ones have that long strip, the buffer. That one has absolutely no buffer, so already it doesn't, even for a right turn in, doesn't feel safe if somebody's trying to exit there too. So my next question was, is it essential that we even have that driveway?
So, so the applicant preferred to have the driveway. One thing with this location, Placentia Avenue going eastward, it's only two lanes both directions. So there's adequate space to have a dedicated right-turn pocket there, all the way through. So the configuration of the site here, it's adequate to, you know, keep the right-turn movements away from the through-lance.
And because it's a, it's a gas station and convenient toward the gas station.
Yeah, but that one's not that far from.
Yeah, and I know it's not.
But a lot of people want to come in one way and go out the other way, come in this way, that's the only reason I could think they would.
I know it's not shown on the slide, but it is two through-lance plus a right-turn pocket, dedicated right-turn pocket.
So there is a right-turn pocket there.
Yes, exactly, it's separated from the through-lance.
Okay, good. Yeah, I drive that street a lot, so.
Yeah, that's something the applicant's going to be doing.
Okay, good, so even when we make that right turn off of Paris, they can pull over to the right and not get, not stop the traffic flow.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, that was it for me, thank you.
I didn't see that, so there's a right turn. I didn't see that, so there's a right turn, deceleration lane on Placentia there as well, I didn't know that. Go on, okay, that makes a big difference, okay. Any other question, I shouldn't say questions?
One more question, at least from me. I am, I'm worried about visibility around the trash enclosure that belongs to the gas station. I was wondering, are we taking any strategies on how to improve visibility around it, particularly like turning left outside of the gas station or right into it? It just, it's a lot like the trash enclosure that's at like the Winko. One, I don't know if you're familiar, but every time I drive past it, I feel like I'm taking my life into my hands. So, I'm curious, I'm not exactly sure what kind of strategies we could take. I know that there's like, those like convex mirrors and things like that, but is there anything that we are doing or can do to help that?
Ms. Jimenez, are you referring to the trash enclosure that Mr. Lopez brought up earlier?
Yes, that one.
Well, we will be working with the applicant.
By the gas canopy, on the...
By the gas canopy. On the screen.
The northern side.
That one's one, but she's talking about the one by the gas station.
Yes, that one, right up there, in the center of the screen, yes.
Right, that one?
Yes, yeah, that one.
And that's the one that Mr. Lopez brought up, right? Yeah, well, we'll be working with the applicant on strategizing of where to place that closer to the convenience store, so the distance of travel for the employees isn't as far.
Okay.
So, reducing the potential for an accident, right, and keeping safety for everyone. So, we'll be looking into that line of sight issue that you're referring to. I know which one you're talking about, by the Starbucks and Winko.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, I know, me too.
I'm like, okay.
Like, here we go. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotten slightly better now that, when it gets filled up. Okay, any other questions for staff and applicant? Okay, and then we go to public comment. Any public comment on this item, only on this item only? The public's voting is, can come to the dais, I say dais podium. And on this item is welcome to come forward. So, you know public comment, we close the public comment portion and come back to the commission for discussion, analysis, whatever you wanna call it.
I just wanted to add that one condition with the relocation of the trash enclosures. But besides that, I really like this project. I think the location is perfect, the residences are, I'm sure the residents are gonna be very, very happy to have that right there, right around the block from them. I'm sure people are just gonna just walk from their house to the grocery store very quick, running some errands. So, I'm very grateful for you guys for coming to this location. I'm excited to see what other tenants you guys are bringing to that spot, and besides that, I'm just looking forward to this project.
I also want a second, I think this is a great project, and I do support moving the trash enclosure to somewhere closer and safer for both drivers and the workers that will be taking trash out. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, while I'm not the biggest fan of palm trees, I think at least like, I'm cool with the date trees out in the front section. At least bees love them, so, you know, I have some at my house and the bees go nuts for it, so. And I do agree, it does agree with the overall style of the building. We do have a dearth of grocery stores in the northern Paris area, so I'm really excited for this. I'm sure the residents are really excited for this, I think it's gonna be great. And again, as long as we move that trash can, that was my biggest gripe, which is nothing really major, so. Thank you for bringing it.
I also am super excited, I really want to commend the developer and our staffer really bringing us a pro... I usually have a lot to say about colors and architecture and layouts and ten million things, and I wanna change the colors on everything, and I had nothing to say, and that was really weird.
It's white, what do you mean?
But it's white with other colors and like the blue, what is it, azulejo? I don't know what it's called in English. The tile, I don't know what the word is, azulejo. It's like, that really brings in such a beautiful accent piece. And I'm really conflicted about the palm trees, 'cause I've been to Puerto Vallarta, and you know Vallarta, that area, and there are palm trees, so I understand why we want palm trees in the Vallarta store. But I've also had friends who have like tripped or stepped on those date palm balls and broken an ankle. So, I think if you're willing, if they're willing to work with staff, and maybe even those small ones that are, you know, a lot shorter, something that's safer, 'cause I'm really conflicted with having date palms there, because we do have a lot of people that walk in the area, have friends that live in the area, they go for walks. Something so close to the neighborhood, you are gonna have people walking there, and the last thing I wanna see is somebody get hurt. I would still like the eight-foot wall, just to be good neighbors and really make sure that our community feels like it's part of a community that we hear them. And also the trash enclosures too, just moving them to make sure that they're safer. There's a building, I think, that was to the north, and it had it almost attached to it, so something like that for all, just to make sure that employees taking the trash out late at night are safe too. You don't want them walking too far. Our city's very safe, but sometimes we have not-safe situations, and we just wanna make sure they're not crossing oncoming traffic. You know, people are tired. And I'm super excited about having a Vallarta store here, I actually have shopped at those, and, you know, a lot of my friends and family shop at those, and, you know, my family's from LA, so we're familiar with these. And, you know, everybody's like, are they gonna have the areas where we can go eat? Are they gonna have this, are they gonna have that, are they, how big is it? Everybody's excited about having something that feels like home. So, looking forward to that beautiful landscaping. Everything is just exactly as it needs to be for our city. I think this is a beautiful representation of what we want our city to look like. It's gonna take it to the next level. I think Vallarta might be able to use this as a showcase piece and tell people, go visit the one in Paris. Go look at that one and what we've done there. I look forward to the uplighting, downlighting, all that, just to really make this a cornerstone, corner place for our community, so, thank you.
I appreciate the fact that Vallarta's coming to City of Paris. I wish it was about a mile up north, it'd be great, but... There's an opportunity up there for them as well, if the dynamics work for them, so. But I do like the design design, the Spanish tile, it's white, I'm perfectly okay with that. It has some of the accents colors in there. White doesn't fade very much as other colors. I do, I do like the fact that they spent some design time and elements into the trash enclosures. The location of trash enclosures could use some enrichment and revised locations. So, that's one thing I would like to have included. I am somewhat opposed to the palm trees, but I'm okay with having shorter palm trees, maybe thicker palm trees, so they don't grow as tall. I think I would like to see a potential limit them to 30 feet, somewhere around there. The other trees are there, are probably 30 to 40 feet height, so it's somewhere that kinda falls within that range. Yeah, so... I like the fact that you, they are working on tenants, which is good. Hopefully, hopefully they get a good kickstart and get the production and construction started pretty fast.
Yeah, I know we ask questions, but we ask questions 'cause, I ask questions 'cause I like this project. I'm ecstatic about this project, I don't say that often, but some of them are like, ah. But this should be a classic, a example, and one of my concerns for all of these projects is cleanliness. I've been here 35 years in this city, and somebody's, hmm, they're cleaning it, maintaining it, to me is numero uno, safety. Come and get run down, no way you put it up, and then two years later, what the heck is this? Who cleans it? Who's the management company? I won't mention any names, Nouveau in Paris. But somebody is really disgusting. And it's a, it really is a reflection on the city, not on us, 'cause we push it. But we, cleanliness is number one. The Spanish tile, I could use some more, the marble, that would be nicer for me, but that's just a personal thing. I'm totally agreeing with shorter palm tree, date palms drop dates. That's why I'm not in favor of date palm. Trust me, I had a date palm house way back in LA, and I'm telling you, the birds were going crazy all over the street. The palms dropped, ones on Ramona are dying already. So, it's a maintenance issue, not just a beauty issue. But because of Spanish, we understand date palm trees, that's fine. But they don't need to be 30 feet, and with date palms dropping on the ground, 'cause you know what you're gonna get, birds. So, that's a minor thing, me, the eight-foot wall, absolutely. I don't care what the code is, this is planning commission, so eight feet stops all that. So, visual out, they can put the trees and all that, but eight feet makes a big difference for those residents. And we have to think of the residents, 'cause that's who we're representing. But I think other than that, one last thing, the trash enclosure that's currently by the station probably might be able to be moved south, closer to the convenience store, so more northwest corner, as opposed to that center. And that's a matter of administrative, but that might make it easier, farther away from just turning out and there's a trash trail, but it's a lot has to do with whoever collects the trash. But that's the location, and even the northern one could be moved down closer to the building. Those are just suggestions, that's for you guys to work out. I thank Mr. Brown, I also thank the engineer, he's very thorough. I think, essentially, I'm not worried about, because you have a pocket to turn in. You got on Placentia right now, thank goodness, no Mid-County. But, yeah, that's a whole nother discussion. But, you know, that turn-in, I think you have two other spots. Mainly you solved it for me, because up north, you can't have 24 feet, not if you have trucks. The 30-foot makes a difference, I don't think you can do that safely wise. I don't care what the fire department said, you know, you can't be having a truck come in and cars going, ah. That's a major entrance, the northernmost on Placentia, so that has to be wide enough for cars and trucks. Anytime you commingled them, it comes to us. Public safety, right, one of the things, public safety welfare, public safety welfare. So, we gotta be concerned about that one. And striping, we'll get into all that with amendments, but I really appreciate the project. There's a lot of ideas, a lot of good things to come. Starbucks, I don't think so. But we could use some sit-down restaurants, it's a market decision. You know, bistros are good, look at September's, he's making a fortune down there, because young people. Old folks like me, see? I'm not dribbling yet, I'll get there. But you need something that's gonna be youth-oriented, that 20, that group, so. Things like bistros and quick food, boom, boom, boom. Then they have sit-down coffee shops, fine, but that's a market decision. But a lot of options you have, and I appreciate you coming in with that. You know, 'cause we got, nothing wrong with jacket box, nothing we're talking about, we got quite a few of those. Okay, so, we really could use it down. And that day that comes where we do get a store on Ramone Express, that's a whole nother thing. You'll have a thousand people to Santa Fe cheering when they see, after 35 years, we're still waiting. But that's one of those things in the future, but you start there, beautiful project. I like the color, 'cause the color pops out. And it's in Spanish, you go to Santa Barbara, that's what you see. I was just in Santa Barbara, beautiful, you know, it's very classic, you see the tile, that's what you want. So, I think you got the full monte from there. I think we got enough suggestions, we trust staff, they will work with you with that. And trash enclosures, whatever, this is Mr. Architect, that's why he's very particular. But, you know, the trash enclosure's a big thing too, because you're gonna have centers, you wanna make sure they're placed right and don't overflow. And so, you start seeing rats come out there. See, we see stuff, you know. So, we don't pick it up, guess what, here they come. We noticed the stuff, right? So, anyway, I'm fine with this, I don't really have anything else to add. I think beautiful, I'm totally in favor of it, and we can say it now. And nothing really to add, other than some of the things in the resolution, of course, but I don't really have anything else to add, I appreciate it, and, you know, just keep us informed. I will, you said there's one in Colton, I think I may go over there just to see it. And this is not some nuance, so you already have established, there's a company coming in. And so, with that, I am done. And unless anyone else has something? Okay, we got quite a few things here, let me read it. I'm awake now, so it shouldn't be bad. I don't know what was going on before, but... Okay, yeah, this candy, I guess it's... Okay, item 6B, conditional use permit, 23-05264, and development plan review 24-00014. Development plan review 24-001014, conditional use permit 23-05264, proposal to consider construction of Ayarthe Marketplace Shopping Center on 10.55 acres, located in the southeast corner of Placentia Avenue and Paris Boulevard. And the commercial community zone, necessity in the following. Number one, conditional use permit, a 4,913-square-foot convenience store and vehicle fueling station, a 2,367-square-foot drive-through coffee shop, and two drive-through restaurants totaling 4,700 square feet, and two development plan review for the site plan and building elevations of the 59,371-square-foot grocery store supermarket, Ayarthe, a 7,510-square-foot inline retail building, and 15,593-square-foot junior anchor building, and a standalone 7,000-square-foot retail building. Requested action, adopt resolution 25-17, certifying the final environmental impact report, and adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Statement of overriding considerations for noise and greenhouse gas emissions and findings of fact, and adopt resolution 25-18, approving development plan review 24-00014, and conditional use permit 23-05264 for the construction of Ayarthe Marketplace Shopping Center on 10.55 acres, based on the findings contained in the resolution, and subject to conditions of approval, and we're gonna have a list of a few amendments, and I'll let the attorney read the resolution, 'cause I don't remember the exact location.
Yeah, so, in regards to the modification that I previously discussed, so that's for resolution 25-17, and that was to change the third-to-last recital on the second page. And I'll go through it one more time. And I believe the word proposed should also be deleted. So, the first clause should read, "All of the findings and conclusions made in this resolution are based upon the administrative record."
Thank you. Also, the commission has wanted to be conditioned to make an eight-foot wall on the eastern portion, and without the southern, southern too? Yeah, on the east side, though, where the residential is, where the east side. The wall on the east side.
East and south.
East and, that's what I'm saying, east and south, okay.
We would add a condition of approval to, to state that the wall along the south and east side of the property shall be eight feet in height?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
From six feet to eight feet.
Six feet to eight feet.
Yeah, yeah. Also, in this administrative, the moving of the trash enclosures on the southeast portion, working with staff, this administrative, move that one, and also the one near the convenience store or the gas pump, to move that. And that will work with staff, we gave one suggestion, probably closer to the convenience store there. So, that's a staff item. Obviously, date palm, and if there are other palm trees, maybe we can shorten that from 30 feet, and other types of palm trees that still fit in that Spanish mission, some of the five, some of the ten, but that was a staff administrative thing. So, that's not something we wanna dictate. We're working about, with staff in terms of palm trees. Not changing palm trees, it's just maybe a different type of palm tree. We talked about Chevron and siphoning, and I'll let you deal with that one. But striping on that left end, potentially the left end of the southernmost portion of Placentia Avenue, that's an engineering consideration, we're gonna put you to work. And it also shows, making sure we have a deceleration lane on Placentia as well, I didn't realize that. So, that would be part of that consideration as well, but that's something to re-review. And I think, unless it was something else.
Yes, one more thing, Mr. Chair, the conditions of approval that were handed out.
Oh, yeah.
The revisions to the conditions of approval that were in the handout.
Yeah, there were so many, I didn't... Item 6B, all the changes that were... It was so many, I didn't, well, item six B, all the changes that would be noted in that. Anyway, that was handed out, and it's still part of public record too. Okay? Oh, that's a lot. So do we have a motion to approve this item, without me reading this whole thing?
I'll move.
You would make me do that.
Yeah, I was considering it. I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Jimenez, and seconded by Commissioner Lopez.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shively?
Yes.
Chair Hammond?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, this motion is approved.
Thank you very much, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Hope that wasn't too agonizing, was it? We move on to item seven, public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. And they can walk up to the podium and wait for the chairperson to recognize you. I won't go through all the other steps. Unless Mr. Brown wants to have, is a public comment. Come on, will you? Yeah, okay. Seeing there's no public comment, we close the public comment portion, move on to business items. Seeing there's no business items, we come on to commissioners' reports and announcements, suggestions, whatever you have this time.
So summer's not technically over, but it is for the kiddos and the educators going back to school. I know Paris Unified and Valverde Unified are going back next week. So I just wanna wish the kids a good first day back and a good school year, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six school year. That's it, and I wish everyone else a good night.
I wanted to echo that sentiment to all the educators and all the students that are going back to school in the next couple of weeks. I know I'm very ready and excited to be going back to work. I also wanted to say, you know, as summer's ramping up, stay cool. I know it's technically the end of summer, as it pertains to schools, but it's just now getting scorching hot. So just, you know, drink water, stay cool, and have a great last few days of summer. Well, school, from school, break, yeah.
Also, I wanna echo, congratulations for a student is returning. It's bittersweet, because now I have a junior. So I'm not fully ready to go back to school now that I have my baby, who's going to be a junior. And with my oldest, we just dropped her off in Florida, she'll be working Walt Disney World for the next five months. We just got back yesterday, so I hear you complaining about the heat, but I can guarantee you, when I stepped off the plane, and I felt the hot, dry heat, I was happy. It felt so good, you don't know. Yeah, it was, it was interesting there. It was humid weather, and I don't agree, apparently. But everything is going well. I, everything, I, we're, when I drive through the city, everything seems to be coming along. There's things that are getting upgraded, there's a lot of work happening, and although it's inconvenience, I have to step back and remind myself that there's gonna be a beautiful outcome. It's like when you remodel your house, when you paint it, like, it's all that hassle. But I do really remind myself that it, there's gonna be a beautiful outcome in our cities, coming to where I think all of us have envisioned it to be, maintaining that small town feel, but with all the beautiful updates and upgrades, and being exemplary to the rest of the communities around us. And thank you to our staff, Mr. Brown, thank you for always answering our questions, even though we're very difficult sometimes. And explaining it, that, explaining the answers in a way where we understand, because it makes sense, and, and that is really appreciated. We're, it's not just jargon. You, I'm sure, are an expert in all that, but you really explain it in a way that is easy for us to understand process and, and see the small picture as well as the big picture, so thank you.
Like to definitely congratulate Commissioner Jimenez's daughter on her, her. Yeah, her internship, for sure. What a great opportunity that is. And very, very impressive, for sure. So I got two, two questions. One, moving forward, solar is a requirement in ninety-nine percent of the buildings. So when we do get, if we can, moving forward, if we can get a roof plan showing solar-ready area on the rooftop, that would be, help benefit us. For one, it shows us that they're, what size are they capable of providing solar for us? That would be beneficial. And the second one is a clarification on a status. There was a truck-trailer storage yard a year and a half, two years back. Just would like to get an update status, if they're progressing with it, or if it, or if it's died. I believe it was Paris and Nance, or Nance and La Palms, or something like that? Markham and Paris, or, yeah, one of those places, if it's still progressing.
We can look into it and report back when we come back on August twentieth.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I think there was a lease sign out there or something, so I don't know if they're following through with that one. Paris and Markham, right?
Was this project entitled, or?
Yeah.
Okay, it was entitled.
It was entitled to truck trailer.
The one east of there was truck parking. Same company was gonna do that one, but now they're gonna sign up. So I don't know the specifics, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it, report back.
Thank you.
Now, here comes that pest, Wayne. You know we're gonna get off that easy, right? Two things, and one of us just passed up, and I think we discussed it, but I'm just publicly doing it. And an explanation, on Ramona Expressway, obviously, you know I'm going to this one. The median, there's three palm trees, and the leaves are dying, so until the city's into it, we, we're gonna keep pushing this item, so they might wanna get to it. You get tired of hearing it, on the record, right? So we want, that is your entrance into the city, so we're gonna, that becomes a, three red flags. Not a side street like, we're out there, but this is your entrance, and they're already gone. So maybe, I know you have some ideas about what's plans and who's responsible, but just so we know, as a public would know, because they see the same things we do. Second, and then we discussed with the engineer, but obviously, the four-way stop. On Morgan Street in Nevada, that should be part of, right out of your Valverde school, so they pull out that school. Hopefully, someone's gonna put that four-way stop. They got this gigantic warehouse that's being built, and our trucks are gonna start coming. So it needs to be a four-way stop there, yeah. And I think you have the answer, but I'm just, you know, putting it on record.
We'll double-check to see if it's part of a conditions of approval for another project. If not, we're gonna take that in, in-house, or see if the developer that's out there right now would be willing to put in the always stop. So we'll make sure that happens.
Okay, as always, Brad.
Yeah, and with respect to the palm trees in the median along Ramona Expressway, we have contacted the applicant, and we are working with him to get that resolved.
Okay, 'cause there was on the median, and then there's three on the actual development right by the Taco Bell.
Yes, we did express that concern as well.
Okay, and also, on that note, further down on Ramona Expressway, the new median too, that is getting built, I did reach out earlier, but like, there was no trees one day, and the next day, bunch of palm trees. Going on from, I think it's, what's that entrance, is it Bradley? Where the double fountains are forward, there, there's palm trees, and, and then there was also some of the other mixed trees, but there are a lot of palm trees there, too.
Yeah, that project is from Center Street, which is basically the fairgrounds, all the way to Ryder Street. I think it's about a two-mile stretch. But, yeah, these plans were taken to the city's beautification committee and accepted there, and it was taken out as a CIP project.
I guess, I guess the thing is to keep it in line, because the Evans Road thing, it's we, I remember being on that, I don't think they were here, but it's a specific format, it's a specific palette for that Evans Road, so it's all similar, all the way down, the same thing would be more, you have, all of a sudden, you see palm trees, but you want some low stuff there, because you don't really wanna have block views and things. Plus the dying leaves, and they're becoming a maintenance issue, so it becomes a city-paid-for maintenance issue. And it makes it easier, when you have to pay for it. So they assess into these districts, it's up to the city now. So that median should just be consistent, because Ramona's such a major street, that's why we're bringing it up. Because you enter, you enter, and that's what you see.
And it goes to this, to this, to this, to this, to this, to this. I go through all the seasons, I drive down Ramona, my way home.
Until you get that grocery store over there, you know. One day, one day. Yeah, just, and I can't, I wanna just thank staff enough for being patient, I mean, I'm gonna be a pest. But one thing, I've been working with staff, and I, I made it public, I'm gonna work to get a planning commission land use and zoning thing, it's been done, it's in draft, so I leave it to staff, who's very busy, to look at it, but it has been done, in fact, I have it with me now, it's almost fifty pages. But it's worth it for any planning commission. Some of the things discussed tonight, you could open up, boom, there it is. This is form-based code, this is what CUP, this is what density bonus, it's there because it's for the benefit of future. And it makes it pretty apparent so good, too, because you're the only ones that would have it. Isn't it amazing that nobody does this but us? We're just for, for, for the forefront of everything, right? I mean, we should, we, you know. So that's one of those things, whenever you have time, I'd love to meet with them, chalk it up, write it up, red mark it, whatever, but it would be good, beneficial, because now, some of the questions that are asked, and there's a lot of stuff in there. What is multifamily, there's different facets of single family, a multifamily. And you would be surprised how much stuff, when you do something like that, how detailed. You know, because I like the Urban Land Institute, I think you've heard of them too, they're very detailed. A little bit too detailed for this thing, but I think that would help. So just let me know, I'd be happy to work with staff, I know they're busy, but give me a time, meeting time, at any time, because we get, not next week, but at some time in the future, I would be happy to help. And you can criticize it, I don't care, it's something that's coming out, and the city would, and even work with council people to see it. Oh, that's what form-based code means. Oh, that's what a density bonus, oh, that's what the different AP zones. All of them are there, so it would really be beneficial for anyone new, anyone old. Anyone new, and other cities are gonna say, can I have it too? Good, give us five million, we'll give it to you. Okay, okay, we can negotiate with Minifee. But other than that, we, we're happy, I'm sure the city appears to be happy to give it to them, good, good neighbor policy, right? Yeah, right. But anyway, I appreciate it, and then we're gonna have a lot of the next agenda, so I turn it over to our director. It's gonna be a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and we appreciate all the work that you put into the document, that is gonna help our commissioners in future projects. We will be tapping on your shoulder for assistance, and, and, you know, to, to meet and, and come up with a document that is going to be easy to understand, but also very helpful. And with that, for the next meeting on August twentieth, we have a full agenda. We have the item that was continued today, the Nance Street Storage and Maintenance Yards. We also have a project that's called the Retreat at Lake Paris. This is the, the site over on Ramona Expressway between Redlands and, let me see, Redlands and Paris Boulevard. It's the project that came before you once before, with the hotel and the two sit-down restaurants and the warehouse. It, it's coming back with the same commercial development at the front, but with residential and a self-storage facility in the back. We also have a project that came before you once before, but it's been, some adjustments have been made per the recommendations of the planning commission and the ad hoc committee members. That's the Acacia Town Homes. We are also gonna see a zoning code amendment initiated by the, by staff to prohibit warehouses in the BPO zone that currently require a conditional use permit. We're also going to bring before you a conditional use permit for Better Buzz, which is a coffee shop in between, at the parcel in between In-N-Out and Raising Canes. And we're also gonna bring you. We, we are busy. We're gonna bring you another city-initiated zoning code amendment for compliance with Assembly Bill ninety-eight. So that's why.
Short schedule, okay.
And the Good Neighbor Guidelines, so it'll be a package. Zoning code amendment and Good Neighbor Guidelines for compliance with the AB ninety-eight.
In the future, I, really for the, for the city attorney, I think I mentioned, was it SB seventy-eight? I think it was SB seventy-eight for some, I'm thinking way in the future, discuss, because it deals with housing, and it deals with the state mandating, and really taking away some of the local quote-unquote initiatives. And so maybe we can get a discussion of that, not currently, but in the future, because you're the only one who knows all the details.
Are you referring to the recent big change with the, the urban infill housing?
Yes.
So that's SB, that's AB one thirty and SB one thirty-one.
Yeah, and there's something seventy-eight, too, I think, that just got from Cal Matters.
That's what, talks about densities, I think.
Yeah.
We can, we can, we can schedule a trainings session, not for August twentieth.
No, 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 no.
For another meeting.
It's just that the, it, it, cities, and some of the things, we talked, like California, in terms of limiting cities' ability for particularly residential. And that can be a concern, because if you don't have much say, you wanna be able to say, I don't want the twenty-feet high, but according now, they can build it. So that is a concern.
Okay, so SB seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine, thank you. I had the wrong number, seventy-nine. That's, he's got enough to do, so that, that could be a long way down. Thank you, I'm, I'm done. Anything else?
So that's, that's, that's it for August twentieth.
Yeah, that's it? Gosh, we wanted more, I mean, what is this? Well, anyway, thank you, Sylvia, thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Brown, I know you got a long trip. You got a cot back here, if you want. But I appreciate it, as usual, and I did go to a L.A. Storm, L.A., Lake Elsinore Storm game, that was nice. It was nice, so if you ever get a chance to go there, you know, wide-open spaces, overpriced, I don't. But anyway, with that, unless there's anything else, we come to adjournment, and all in paper adjournment. Hi? Oh, I thought you wanted to stay, okay. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you to our people there, and we appreciate it. Just give me that look, you better be finished now. Thank you very much, and with that, we close it out tonight. Thank you very much, audience, and we appreciate it.